Get up and hold here. So as a reminder, of course, of why we're here, the vision of the Milton School District is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission to support that vision is that the School District of Milton, in partnership with our community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that note, we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 22nd. Please join me in salute to our flag, which has moved over to the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. But are you aware of any changes we need to make to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Ed to approve the agenda that we have in front of us. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Opposed? The agenda is as you see it. Okay. Dean is confirmation of oath of office. We have three folks sitting in front of you here, myself, Jennifer, and Annette, that are embarking on a new three-year term on the school board. We, as such, have to take the oath of office. It's included in Word docs. Carly's got enough on there. The three of us individually have already done that with Carly as our noted Republic to witness it and stamp it and so forth. So we are duly sworn in, and as of calling this meeting to order, we will say that all three of us are seated. So that's just the public confirmation of new board members taking their spots. Okay. So having said that, next order of business is election of board officers and a CISA two delegate. For those of you that don't know, we have four board officers. We have a president, a vice president, a clerk, and a treasurer. And from the seven folks in front of you, we're going to pick the four of us, or four people to fill those offices for the coming year. Just procedurally, we'll break down through the order and the order I mentioned them. There's a president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer. We'll tackle those one at a time. We will, I will open nominations for each particular office, and building what we get for nominations, follow the procedure then to either close. And if, just for FYI for the board members, if we end up closing with only one candidate, I will, for efficiency, entertain a motion to close and cast a unanimous ballot for that particular person if that's how it unfolds. So, and that's, as you said, that's procedurally correct to do that. So, having said that, we will start now, and we will open nominations for the office of president. I nominate Joe Martin for board president.
Second.
Another, well, FYI, nominations don't give a second. That's my question then. Appreciate that. So, I've been nominated, I will accept. Are there other nominations for president? Third and final call. I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimously valid for Joe Martin to be board president. Second. Thank you. That motion from Rick, seconded by John, is to close and cast unanimously valid for myself, Joe Martin, as board president. Questions on what's in front of you? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your confidence. We will roll on. I will open nominations for the office of vice president of the Board of Education.
I'll nominate Rick Mullins as vice president.
And Rick, you accept, as I do. Are there other nominations for vice president? And third and final call for nominations for vice president. Yours where you can close and cast unanimously valid, or you can nominate someone else. You can do either.
I'll do the final. Make a motion to close the...
Close, close nomination.
Close nominations and cast unanimously valid for Rick Mullins as vice president.
Thank you.
Please say.
I'll second that. Thank you. Okay. Hate to be late to the folks, but that's who we need to serve. Tracy's board president does. Tracy, motion is seconded by John to close nominations and cast unanimously valid for Rick as vice president. Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Rick. And now we'll open nominations for clerk of the Board of Education.
I'll nominate Jennifer Johns as the school board clerk.
I'll second.
You accept?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. Jennifer accepts. Are there other nominations for clerk? And third and final call for nominations for clerk?
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimously valid for Jennifer Johns as the school board clerk.
I'll second.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Annette to close nominations for clerk and cast a unanimous ballot for Jennifer Johns. Questions from anyone? And all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Jennifer. And we will open nominations for board treasurer.
I will nominate Don Dummer as board treasurer.
John, you accept? I will. Thank you. Are there other nominations for treasurer of the Board of Education? And third and final call for nominations for treasurer?
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimously valid for John to be board president.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion, seconded by Ed, is to close nominations and we would cast a unanimous ballot for John as our treasurer. Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, John. It doesn't seem awkward, but that's the procedure we have to follow even when there are single nominations. One more order of business would be our CISA two delegate. CISA two, if you don't oppose, is the Cooperative Educational Services Association. Whole state is divided into about thirteen districts. We are part of CISA number two, and as such, as the need arises, and it's very frequent that we would need a delegate, we have a person that would represent us for that, previously held by Jennifer. Nominations are open.
I'll, sorry, I'll nominate Jennifer B. Cisa.
Okay. Are there other nominations for our CISA two delegate? And third and final call?
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimously valid for Jennifer Johns to be our CISA two delegate.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Ed to close and cast unanimously valid for Jennifer as our delegate to CISA two. Questions from anyone? And then all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you for that.
See, Joe, last year we also did a WASB delegate.
Yeah, I'm only clear whether that's elected or appointed, but I think it's been done both ways. I guess, let's, let's just toe the line here a little bit. So, we have a WASB, they'll go here again, take this week, and I'll add it to Wisconsin Association of School Courts, is a group that we belong to, and most districts do. And as particularly in the end, we have been frequently outside that, we have delegates to that body that represents our views and it's a grassroots governance for school courts across the whole state. Rick has served us in that capacity previously, but I would open nominations for a WASB delegate from the floor.
I'll nominate Ed Stone to be the WASB delegate.
And Ed, would you accept? Okay. Are there other, I'm sorry, are there other nominations for WASB delegate? And then third and final call?
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimously valid for Ed Stone to be our WASB delegate.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion was seconded by John to close and cast unanimously valid for Ed to be our WASB delegate. Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congrats, Ed. Okay. That order of business is out of the way, and we're going to jump back to some more normal agenda items. Action on the minutes would be next. And those are in Word docs, of course.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on April 8th, 2024.
Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our previous meeting minutes. Are there any questions on those? I see all in favor of approval, please say with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion for approval is going to be seen. Action on vouchers follows next. I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $1,102,520 and $12.
I'll second that.
Thank you. John's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve our checking account vouchers. In the amount John just enumerated. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? And then all that would be in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The vouchers are approved. H is public comment, and as I picked up the sheet, we have no one signed up to speak to us, so we will roll past that. And super candid update is Red Hawk highlights and updates from our administrators. Our administrators can come to the podium and share highlights from their schools and departments.
All right. Good evening, everyone. In the 4K from third grade world, we have just been in an either completing or East is just going to have their spring sing. So that's always exciting when the little ones get all fancied up and sing their hearts out to their families. We are pulling up on our current high reading testing window for our students and to see the local growth that they have made throughout this year, so we're excited to have that coming soon. We are in a math pilot right now, and we're on our second program that we are piloting. So our teachers, a smattering of teachers from all of the elementary buildings are trying out different math curriculum to see what would best meet our needs for our kids. And we are finalizing our last professional development day of the year. In that day, we have a jam cat day coming up on next Monday for our teachers to be learning and doing some learning themselves, as well as doing some essential standards work to finish up that work that we've been working so hard on this year. And then there'll also be time in there to have our teachers work with Northside teachers to do some transition talks from our third graders who will be heading on up to Northside next year. So that's the K3, 4K3 world.
Hello. Gassy, gentlemen, from Northside. Welcome, Miss Smith. I'm really glad Mr. American and Miss Johnson are returning. We had a really eventful past month at Northside with a lot of really fun activities. And I picked us off with like the solar eclipse where the entire building was able to go out with classes thanks to the donations for generous families. And they really, I mean, just, it was spectacular, and it was probably the first time I've experienced anything like that with that much students. And the wonder in all that was shown in all the lessons for science that were incorporated leading up to the eclipse, it was really remarkable to have that taken away. We also finished up with forward testing with a really smooth. We are so grateful for our IT department, who just was absolutely incredible, as well as Shelley Hensler and John, who organized all the scheduling for it. Teachers worked really hard. Students were excited to be able to demonstrate their knowledge, especially once we got the researchers added. So thank you for that, IT. And then we also had a really great experience with fourth grade making learning come to life with a fur trade and the rendezvous that just racked up this morning. It really goes back to like our Wisconsin history for social studies curriculum, and they absolutely enjoyed that. We have Mr. Karcher, Mr. Smith, Pos Smith, and, or Pop Dice, Mr. Dice, Steve Smith, and Mr. Karcher. All just wearing the outfits. The, the pictures are incredible. I'm sure you've seen the club I just shared. And the kids got to participate in like the fur trade and then go to the trading post and just the amount of time and effort it takes to put into those events is tremendous, but it's definitely worth the pay up and the learning that takes place. We also had our corporate music program where Ms. Schultz and Ms. Rockwell did all the performances for fourth grade, which also focuses on Wisconsin history and ties in some really fun songs as well about Wisconsin. Fifth graders are excited about band coming up, band sign up, so that's kind of a, everyone's lying, they're all talking about they're going to do like a Pennington theme this year. Ms. Weston has really put together something fun for the sixth graders to be able to try out different instruments and check them out. And then sixth grade, they are having their first recite in a while at Northside, and the student council is running that all on their own, doing a conceptual job. And they also just received a Duke of Wisconsin Award for the most creative video for their serial drive collection, as well as the most boxes in the entire state, which was pretty exciting. So they came out and we got the recording recorder there as well to capture all of the great memories, and it was just really a very significant event for our student council, who worked so hard to make sure that this happened, and our entire community is showing just the generosity of freshmen. We are looking forward to all of the upcoming events, field trips, I'm ready for any of the information that's mentioned, and it's going to be a blur. It's going to be somewhere in the year before we know it, and we want to make sure that we make these last moments meaningful. Thanks so much.
So, what is the, the sixth graders, the...
Money unit?
Thank you.
Yes. So money unit is coming up. They've already started learning all that, I do have applications. I could continue with the first couple, but I can look it up really quick and get back to you.
Do you have any email? Yeah, I like to.
Oh, it is so fun. We'd like to actually invite all of you, so that anyone who can come by. And Tracy, you came last year too, which was wonderful. Superintendent Domit joins us every year. So anyone that can make it, it is phenomenal. So for those of you who aren't aware, what money unit entails, I mean, a lot of it goes into, they tie it really like it's a cross-regular activity. But the sixth graders, what it ultimately comes down to, they present a business proposition or proposal for what they want to either make or provide, or offer. It could be a game, it could be crafts, it's really whatever they decide they want to share, and they sell it using money that students can earn throughout this entire year. And it's just an incredible experience for all. Matter of fact, many adults who like come back say that was like one of their most memorable outdoor ed course, and then money unit, one of their most memorable experiences at Northside. And then the sixth graders, their tables, their booths, and it's just such a great learning opportunity, and it's also really fun for all of us adults to enjoy. So if you come, we will get you a lot of cash, and you can come spend it for the breakaway our sixth graders are making for money. Thanks, Miss Hannah.
All right. Ben Yacher from the middle school to provide an update. Just before spring break, we had a building vocabulary competition. So our seventh and eighth grade students have been working on some explicit instruction around vocabulary acquisition, learning different recent stems and words, and they, they spent six weeks doing that, and then they had the opportunity to kind of do like March Madness brackets to have competition where we had representatives from all the different advisories. So in seventh grade, our winning team represented Mrs. Harfords Advisory, and eighth grade, our winning team represented Mrs. Paul Conings Advisory. It's pretty fun to see how excited the kids got initially when they found out about this. It did not sound very appealing, but when they started to compete, it was a lot of fun to watch. Our unity team had the choose to include week, so we had a different theme for every day of the week, highlighting just inclusivity and kindness in our schools. Unfortunately, this snow day, but their, their final choose to include banner signing on delay for a little while, but we did, then I had that variety of what students signed the banner for choose to include and choosing kindness. And then students also created a chain link where they signed their name and then why they choose, choose kindness over other actions. So we've got a chain link and the poster hanging up at the front of our school. We're currently in the middle of our, of our math pilot, so our seventh grade math team is working pretty diligently on that. Unity team also hosted a Unity Rap Night two weeks ago on Friday after school, so we had Red Rock's many kids stay and participate in that. We are trying to wrap up Wisconsin Forward Testing. Our staff did a really nice job putting together a schedule that'll help us pace ourselves a bit more in the testing to get the kids less intense schedules so that they were, they were not testing for long periods of time. And now we're just going through the makeup testing portion for since we're absent. And then lastly, we found out today that our web group, so that's our eighth graders who are some leaders in the school, they go into advisories once a month to work with seventh grade advisories. They raised $1,240 for the Humane Society through their raffle baskets, so we're really proud of the work that the kids did to put that together, and that was kind of their community team, rather than students' shows. Thank you.
So finally, Elman High School. I see lots going on this spring here. Our Jazz, they just returned this last weekend. We're at a jazz festival at the D.W. O'Clare in Tampa performing. They also took master's music classes, music theory classes all the way to the university. A new event that we did, Mr. Chuck took up there, it was a huge success. Last week, all nine of the 10th grade students took a three-day CT. They're all very excited to take that, but this is a successful testing day last week. On May, coming up, some things coming up. On May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, let me just, John O'Carver will be performing the Time Machine. That is Friday night, May 3rd, and Saturday night, May 4th at 7:00, and then Sunday, May 5th, the 2:00 PM math night, students have been working very hard on that production. Very excited too this week, and the academic career plan, so the entire class of 2024 will be presenting their academic career plans. So seniors have been preparing those for a while, but they work on those presentations. So they, again, I know I have sat on those presentations, but those will be going this week. We're excited for them and happy to see the seniors as they begin to do their journey in Elman High School, talk about what their plans are when they leave. Today, we are very, very fortunate, members of the IVEA group, the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and... Oh, yeah, I have it right here. And the C group. So we had six students had the courage to present in front of about a third of the teachers during the LC time. These are, six students are colored, who talked about their experiences in Milton High School, it was a very engaging conversation, presentation, give those students a lot of credit. Verley Orr and Sarah Brubaker from the Student Services Department, who will be with us for the last year and a half, and they had their presentation. They wanted their teachers to see, and they did a great job. Today, we're very proud of them, hopefully continue to do some really good, good work. This last week, a week ago Sunday, we partly honored our top 10 graduating seniors at Badger Conference, top scholars, top audience scholars. So our students, along with students, top graduated seniors from all 15 other graduate conference high schools, were recognized at Oregon High School. And finally, finally, we recognize two students from the track team this year, two school records have already fallen. Pardo Sheehy actually extended her own full ball record that she set last year, and then just this last week, I shared it, it's a school record. So, thank you.
And one thing I'd like to add, Jeremy talked about the Badger Conference Top Scholars Awards, and it really is a nice event at Oregon High School. Jeremy played a key role in that. Every year, they rotate which high school principal in the conferences, organizer for that event and for their meetings throughout the year. So Jeremy got to introduce the keynote speaker to kick things off, and he also got the honor of introducing his son, Caleb, as he was one of the top scholars, and congratulations to the Bill Horns.
Okay. Is that it? Rich, for Red Rock's Highlights?
It's a bunch. Congrats to everybody. It's impressive and gratifying.
Next up is our HR committee report, Rick.
All right. Thanks, Joe. The HR committee met last week on April 17th. First item on the agenda is discussion of possible action on support staff health insurance premium. This conversation is a continuation of our January 2023 HR committee meeting, and more recently, the March 20th HR committee meeting. The board approved the HR committee and administration's recommendation to increase teachers, administrators, supervisors from 12.6% to 15%, and the support staff from 6% to 10% for the 23-24 year. This change was coupled with the introduction of wellness and primary care payable visits with a $200 single health wellness incentive and a $400 family health wellness incentive, effective for our current 23-24 year. Excuse me. The comparison data shows that the school district of Milton's support staff maximum on the pocket are highly competitive in comparison to other districts. For 2020, 24-25, we are assuming that the district's overall contribution to employee medical insurance will increase by approximately $400,000. Charts are showing that comparative data are in the attached memo, which I believe the board has seen before. Reviewing our past HR committee and Board of Education conversations around health care insurance contributions, HR committee is recommending increasing support staff health insurance premium contribution from 10% to 13% for the 2024-25 year. We did have quite a bit of conversation regarding this at the HR committee level, looking at the data and the history, committee is recommending this change from 10% to 13%. We had a, had a little discussions to kind of reach, you know, some people wanted to stay at 10, or go to 13, or 15. My personal opinion, that making smaller or incremental changes more often is the way to go. I think it's also important to remember that even with the recommended change, if it were to pass, that the district is still going to be paying 87% of that given premium. So the, I'm going to have a discussion first.
But you put the motion on the floor.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to modify the employee share, the health insurance premium for the 24-25 plan year, changing the employee portion of the premium for support staff from 10% to 13%.
Second.
Okay. You heard Rick's motion, seconded by Jennifer. Now, if there's anyone that wants to discuss or give more insight or whatever property you have. Any questions on, Rick gave a wonderful synopsis of where that discussion has been and what has kind of led it to the motion that's on the floor at the moment. So, any questions from anyone?
I just want to share that in Word docs, there is a memo on this topic that highlights it was a little bit more in-depth. Rick gave a really nice overview. There's a link in that memo to a presentation that we've looked at earlier. In the presentation, it has some slides that have some comparisons, and we've been looking for multiple months and having a conversation with the HR committee about how our benefits compare with both Badger Conference and other school districts in Rod County. And in the slides that are in the, the presentation, it's comparing the maximum cost to the employee for both, separated out by support staff group and by certified staff. And I guess a couple, a couple key highlights from the memo that I want to make sure aren't missed. Medical costs per school, districts across the state are continuing to rise at a very rapid rate, and I don't think that that's a surprise to anyone. Medical costs are going up, medical insurance are going, is going up. For our school district, employee benefits as a group make up about 22% of our overall budget. So if you think of, we look at a pie graph sometimes that shows everything that we spend as a school district, and almost a quarter of that pie graph is taken up by employee benefits, so it's a very significant part of our budget, and it's something that's rising rapidly. And as that portion of our budget rises, we have to make reductions in other places to balance that. And for this coming year, with the increase in medical insurance costs, we're anticipating approximately $400,000 in additional money that the school district is going to be spending on employees' medical insurance premiums. That will go up or down a little bit on one side or the other of $400,000, depending on the answer from the board's action tonight, but it's a significant contribution that the school district is making to our employees to help cover a portion, a significant portion of their medical costs. I just wanted to highlight those things. I don't know, Chris, do you have anything else that you want to add?
I have nothing.
Anyone else with any thoughts?
Not a question. I just had a thought. You know, as part of the HR committee, I was the one that was against this increase. I just want to share why, and it's important. Couple numbers stick out to me. 22-23, just for example, the family HSA, the employee paid $891. This year, that jumped to 1587, that's about a 74% increase. Next year, the proposed 13% is 2267. So that's another 43% increase. That's a pretty significant bump for, for support staff. Some of these people are making $20 an hour. I just feel, and when I calculate, maybe, Rich, you can correct me in this, but I have about a $14,000 savings to the district. I think it's, not to diminish $14,000 in today's world, but to take that from the support staff, that's, I just can't get behind that, so I vote to no for tonight. Some of these people are making $20 an hour. I just feel, and when I calculate, maybe Rich, you can correct me in this, but I have about a $48,000 savings to the district. I think it's not to diminish $48,000 in today's world, but to take that from the support staff, that's, I just can't get behind that, so I vote some of it tonight.
I have a question. How much does the cost to replace a support staff? Do we have a calculation on how much it costs to replace someone?
There's not necessarily a cost to replace someone. If someone retires or resigns from the district, we post the position, and depending on the position, some, and the candidate, some might come in at a lower upcoming salary and some may come in at a higher upcoming salary. There's, and it usually is somewhat of a wash as different positions are filled.
Well, when I say cost replacement, there's obviously training, there's onboarding. So there, there are costs, they're embedded, they're not explicit. So there are some organizations that do have a cost to replace, so they, they kind of look at that. Is that $48,000 not going?
I'll start with that. In our conversation with the H R committee, we shared that it's impossible to know exactly how much that savings is going to be because we need to have our open enrollment period. People need to decide if they're going to be on family or single, H R A or H S A. So it's really an estimate, and we estimate it somewhere in the 50 to 60,000 dollar range, depending on different choices that folks make.
What is the percentage of certified staff to support staff? So if the increase is $400,000, and you're saying $50,000 would be the cost for the, this increase that we cover over the $400,000, would that be 75% or 25% on average?
I don't, 75% is a little high, Tracy, I have to get back to you on most of those. Actual numbers are 80, yes, here.
Okay.
Chris, I was not able to attend the H R meeting and reading the memo. It says after a focus review, can you just help me understand what changed? No, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out all the memo.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can you help me understand the change in the desire to, what changed from 10%? No, I, to me, this is a whole, I just want to understand.
I, I think for clarity, we changed from 6 to 10 a year, right? This is another step, I guess, would be a way to characterize it.
Yeah, Eric can describe that too a little bit for, for board members who are either new this year or, or even were new last year, because it's a conversation that we've been having for a while. Part of the study, and in the data that's, that's in board docs, has been around how our benefits compare with other districts and both at the Badger Conference and in Rock County. And as part of that study, we've looked at, and to help manage overall costs to the district, we've looked at moving to the same level of district you put into the benefits for all employee groups. It's, it's extremely unusual for districts to have one group paying a certain amount and a different group paying a different amount. As a matter of fact, the only other district that, that we saw in our comps that did that, that had different levels, had it reversed from what we have, had their, their support staff paying a considerably higher percent than their certified staff. And when I'm proposing that, the efforts that we've been making over the last couple of years have been to bring those two things into alignment. The conversation a year ago was rather than bringing support staff all the way up to 15% to put them at the same level, last year, we need to move from 6% up to 10%. The conversation at the H R committee meeting now, and the recommendation from administration and from the H R committee, is rather than taking that from 10% all the way up to 15%, would be to take another step and go from 10% to 13%. So it isn't a, it's not a new process, it's something that we've been talking about now for a couple of years, and it's just one more step in that process of balancing all of the employee groups at that same level.
I did, I just wanted to respond to John quickly. We already had this conversation at the committee level, and no one likes increasing insurance. It's, insurance is expensive, you know, our premiums are going up already from being 9.9%. And I, I think if we don't do anything this year, then the change next year will be even greater or even bigger shot. So that's why I like the idea of making a smaller change now. I also did want to add that this has been discussed at the benefits advisory group. Granted, there aren't a lot of support staff that attend moves, but we've been having these conversations, they, I don't want to, it's not, not as if they like it, but I think they understand. That's kind of the impression I got.
That's the way you represent.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I'm in favor of this bump to the 14%.
Yeah, I understand, represent the H R committee as well, and again, apparently could bring up some of those, you, you see it in board docs, slide three through seven through six, all of those slides will show that the district is, again, once again, very competitive in all of these areas.
For the, for the board members that aren't, I can take a minute to
Yeah, please do so.
Because the slide can be a little bit confusing for folks, having been looking at it as in depth as the H R committee had. The blue bar for each of the different school districts here is the employee's annual cost maximum for single insurance. So the blue bar represents if you're on single insurance, the maximum that the employee would pay for the year. So for example, if support staff are on H S A, they're paying a shade under $1,000 per year. The red bar is the median for the comp group, which is almost double that, it's about, there's actually, yeah, it's right around double that, it's about $1,835.31. And then the lime green bar is for employees that choose family insurance and then the family median. So you can see on our H S A or our H R A, employees have option of either of those. Our total out of pocket max, maximum for our support staff compared to Rock County school districts is, is considerably lower than the average in almost all of the other districts. And Carl, if you put the support staff up for the Badger Conference, so this is the same thing for Badger Conference. Obviously, more schools, and if a district like ours has more than one option, we put both options up, but again, well below the average for the H R A, or excuse me, the H S A, about on the average for the H R A for single, and again, well below. It's really important for us to offer competitive benefits for our employees, and we feel like we do that really, really well. And these graphs are, the status is evidence that we do it really, really well. It also is very important for us to live within our means. We had a, we asked our voters for some additional operating funds a year ago, and, and they worked in favor of that, they gave us the message that we want, that we need to be as efficient as we can with our operations. So that's why our administration and the H R committee are recommending this morning.
So I'd just like to make a comment on what you're saying. And the way I look at it, you don't have to be the same as the other districts. So that's just my opinion, and for those that disagree, that's fine. To take the, this percentage away from the support staff, it just seems, I understand insurance is coming up, and I don't know if $50,000, this is where I'd like to take $50,000, $50,000, I don't know, is kind of where I'm sitting with this, to say that the support staff needs to take that, that larger percentage, would it work more likely that I could lose, even in the district? So I'm not sure I can get behind this motion.
Again, I just want to comment comparing us to other districts. If you look at our revenue or number compared to other districts, I think a lot of us have seen those charts before, towards bottom of that one too, so just another thing to remember.
When it comes to these support staff that are paid, I know we increased and made big strides in that in the last couple of years. I mean, so what we don't see is these districts that are, you know, the support staff's paying 15%, how should salaries stack up with support staff? Are we employees or, you know, salaries?
I think that's a really good question, and our, we have made some really strong efforts. I, I think that the decision back when our support staff was paying only 6% of their, their premium, the district was picking up 94%, I think that decision was made in part because our salaries were quite low at that time in comparison to other districts for our support staff. Over the last few years, we've had significant increases every year, for the last three years, for our support staff, to bring those salaries in line with other districts. And it's really not an attempt to be the same as other districts. It's, it's, that's not our goal at all. Our goal is to be competitive with other districts within the resources that we have available. So I think Rick's point is that our resources are very low compared to other Badger Conference school districts, so we have to make decisions at times to live within our resources. And I think Tracy, your point is very valid too, that, that we want to be competitive. We need to be competitive, and we, we, we have an incredibly hardworking staff, and, and we're able to do great things for our students because of the outstanding staff that we have. And I think that's why we work hard to offer salaries and benefits that are extremely competitive with other districts that have more resources than we do. But part of it is having to make tough decisions where we're able to tighten our belts as a school district, and the district contributing 85% of the employee's medical costs for our certified staff, and if this passes the board, contributing 87% of our employees certified, or our support staff's medical cost is a very generous benefit compared to other school districts and compared to private industry.
And I wouldn't disagree with your comment on the percentages. Where I, I hesitate is, I understand we're trying to get up to the 15%, but that's comparatively the same as our higher paid certified staff in the most part. If we were to say, okay, we're going to raise this to 13% and then we don't, we don't anticipate needing more steps in the future, but again, we're just leading down that path. So again, that's where I can hesitate on these. Have we raised the wages to where it's now not going to be going backwards in our district? So if we've raised wages to be competitive, and now we've hit it with this larger increase, now are they making less?
We have not determined salary increases for any of our playgroups for next year. We just had our first negotiation session with the teachers, and then typically, once that gets finalized, then we would look at salary increases for other groups. So it isn't important how, how that point.
But that's one last number that I ran that I'll throw up there. Two years ago, at 891, let's just say they made $16 an hour, it took about 55 hours to cover the cost of their insurance. If we propose this, same person's making $20, $20 an hour, likely, it's going to take them 110 hours, so, to pay for their cost of insurance. So I mean, even with the increase, I think it's still, is a pretty significant bump for our support staff.
I would say you're exactly right, that medical costs continue to rise for everyone, and, and it's something that everybody in their, their home budget has to deal with. They've increased cost of, of medical costs and insurance costs. I think that we as a school district, as employers, have an obligation to offer our employees benefits that are competitive with other groups, and I think that we do that extremely well.
Anyone else with a thought?
Just one last thing that I'd like to share is, we know that we're anticipating a balanced budget for next year, but we also know that this increase in insurance cost of over $400,000 is going to play a significant part in that. We'll be making tough decisions over the next couple of months about both where we need to make reductions, where we can tighten our belts, and how we're going to address looming budget shortcuts in coming years, and decisions that we make now not only have an impact on next year's budget, but have an impact on every budget after that. And no matter what the amount is, any amount that we spend, increased amount that we spend on benefits has to come from somewhere. So it literally comes down to, are we willing and open to making reductions in other areas to have the piece of the pie of benefits continue to grow?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. If anyone has no further comments, I'll reread it, and then we'll vote. The motion on the floor was Rick seconded by Jennifer, to modify the employee share of health insurance premium for the 2425 plan year, changing the employee portion of the premium for support staff from 10% to 13%. So everyone's clear?
Roll call, Mr. Joe.
Yes, sir. So we'll roll call vote that, and an I or a yes is voting in favor of the motion that I just read you. I'll start to my left with Ed.
No.
So no. Jennifer? Joe is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Is a yes. Tracy is next?
No.
John is next?
No.
And Annette? Okay, abstention noted. The vote is three to three, the motion fails. Thank you for that, and we will move on. B, Rick, is up for you if you want to table.
Before we move on, could you maybe have a discussion with somebody? Be willing to go to 12% instead of the 13, I'm just going to throw that up there. Discussion? Don't discussion, don't have a discussion.
Yeah, I think 1% is, is going to be a difference, 13, 12, but, you know.
Discussion.
Maybe as a committee.
I just wanted to remind everyone, if we don't do something today, when next year, those decisions are going to be
We're going to have to decide either way, right? It's not a support staff problem, it's not a no problem, it's an insurance problem. So something has to break someone, right? And I, I understand the feeling, that was not the condition, like I said, but it's a pull of the support staff to these extremes. I'm open to the conversation, but maybe it's a committee thing first.
I'll go. We've got it for a moment, it'll last two weeks. Yeah, so.
So what would that take the premium to?
What's your, what's your question, Grace?
What would it, what, what would it take the premium to? So right now, let's just look at the most populated one. Right?
That's interesting.
That's, that's
Rich, do you have any thoughts or comments on?
We, our open enrollment period is coming up, so if, if the board doesn't make any decision tonight, or if the board doesn't take action to make any changes tonight, we would need to move forward with what we have in place right now. Does that have any impact, Chris, or, or would there be an opportunity to bring something back to the next board meeting?
So our next board meeting, we're also going to be talking about Power Harder, vendor, or Flex and Cobra. So that will have to be decided at our next board meeting in May. So that will be tying into that discussion. So technically, Rich, we do have one more H R committee, we're looking at the schedule for May 1st and that board meeting, but we're really
So question, does open enrollment stay open long enough that a decision made at the next meeting, folks would react to it?
It will, it will happen for just two weeks, but the next board meeting is on
About May 8th, I think.
So that we will be doing open enrollment on the 9th.
The first day or the last?
That's not right.
That's not right.
So 20 minus 4 to the 6th, right?
13.
The first board, the next board meeting is May 13th.
13, then it'll be the 4th, so that we would do the open enrollment for two weeks.
Okay, that's just for everyone's FYI and changes.
And we would need all employee decisions by May 31st to be able to start getting things ready for that first payroll in June, because then we start looking at the premiums for July and August in June.
As board members are considering Rick's question and whether to, to discuss that or potentially take action on it now, or bring it back to H R committee and bring it back again to the board, I just, I want to reinforce again that there's a limited amount of resources available for next year, and we have not started, we haven't finalized salary increases for next year, and it's incredibly important for us to be competitive with salaries for folks and decisions, staying where we are with insurance and increasing the amount that we're paying for benefits leaves less for us to be able to pay for salaries. leaves less for us to be able to pay for salary increases. So when decisions like this eat up a bigger part of the pie for benefits, and when I say that it leaves less for everything else, salary is the, by far, the biggest part of everything else. So we just need to be alert to continuing that conversation about what that means for availability for salary increases for folks.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think that when we had the conversation a year ago, there was a decision that going from six percent to fifteen percent was too big a jump, and that, that the board at that time would refer to do it in smaller increments. And that was at the recommendation of administration and at the recommendation of the HR committee, and I saw good reason for that. Those reasons haven't changed. There's still very strong reasons to continue that process, and the compromise position that was hashed out at the HR committee to do that in another step rather, in multiple steps, rather than going all the way from ten percent to fifteen percent in one step, I think was a valid compromise. On behalf of the administration and the conversations that Ross and Chris have had and I have had, we definitely would feel that increasing it to twelve percent for the coming year would be better than leaving it at ten percent and leaving a bigger gap for the coming year.
Y'all are going to make a motion to modify the employee's share of health insurance premium for the twenty-four, twenty-five plan year, changing the employee portion of the premium for support staff from ten to twelve percent. Okay, motion on the floor is very, very simple, which is the one we just talked about, of course. As you listen closely, Rick, we're proposing to what Rick said, I'm sorry. We're proposing an increase for that support staff group from ten percent to twelve. Thirteen is the number in the previous motion that did not pass. So that's the motion that's on the floor. It's open for discussion. If anyone wants to add anything further to that?
Can I go back to what Rich just said? And I'm not asking for an answer on this, but should we vote this through, we still have the opportunity to negotiate a little bit more money possibility when it comes time to set their, their increase for the year.
Moving, so I guarantee you, moving from ten percent to twelve percent gives us more wiggle room on salary than staying at ten percent would give us, yes.
So is there the possibility to, not apples to apples, try to get that two percent back in increases? We're not saying we have to, I'm just wanting to know that.
That, if we built in the conversation in executive session later in this meeting and in future conversations about negotiations and potential salary increases for next year.
And I just wanted to reiterate that the district is paying eighty-eight percent.
If this passes.
Yeah, if this passes. So let's not forget that the district has a lot of money invested in each of our employees because we do care about them. Eighty-eight percent is a very large percentage to cover the cost of health insurance premiums.
And I think, again, by voting this down, we're going to be, we're kicking the can down the road. We're going to set up future boards for some, for some, some big type headaches. The comparative data with other districts show that it's extremely unlikely that anyone would leave our district to take a job in any of these other districts in order to have better benefits.
Exactly. The data speaks.
Really, really strong benefits package.
Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, we will proceed to vote. We will also do a roll call. I'll bounce to, do I go on the line and add, would you like to abstain again?
No, I'll go, yes.
Okay. And then John?
No.
Is a no. Tracy?
I'm not ready yet. Sorry, I was asking for more time. I was trying to do some quick calculations for you.
I won't give you much.
If you give me like a minute, sorry.
Rick?
Yes.
Is a yes. Joe is a yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
And Ed?
Yes.
And? Grace?
Is there a question that you have, Tracy, that we could help with before you vote?
No. A twelve percent power vote, yes.
I call that a six to one. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next up, second item of the agenda is discussion and possible action on twenty-four, twenty-five supplemental teacher contract compensation update. Annual administration review is additional teacher contract compensation that assesses the need for recommended adjustments to be presented to both the HR committee and the Board of Education. The HR and business office teams review data from major conference school districts evaluating factors such as the number of applicants and the challenges encountered securing qualified candidates. For the upcoming twenty-four, twenty-five academic year, the administration proposes the standardization of national board certifications for student services staff. Currently, schools, psychologists, school counselors, occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists are unable to obtain regular education national board and/or master educator certifications. From the compensation model incorporated national board and master educator certifications in twenty sixteen, compensation for speech and language pathologist national certification was included in additional teacher contract compensation while other student services staff were overlooked. By existing compensation options to include other student services staff for their national certifications, we aim to establish uniformity among the student services staff. To receive compensation for their national certification, people will be able to standardize the student services staff. And the list of the different tiers and the positions included in each tier are attached in the memo in board docs. Carly has picked up on the screen. Harvey?
In board docs, there's a short memo Carly has pulled up on the screen, the attachment that goes with it. We're not recommending any changes to the part of the filled tiers, and those are described here, tiers one through tier four. We did make some changes to those a year ago. We added some additional positions to them and increased the, the compensation for each tier. Just a quick little bit of background information, in the past, we have had stipends for national board certification and master educator certification. Those are things that classroom teachers can go through a process and receive national board certification or master educator certification. But we have employees in our teacher group that aren't, that, that we utilize our teacher contract compensation model for that aren't classroom teachers. A year ago, we added speech and language pathologist national certification to that designation, and this year, we're recommending adding the ones that are listed in that for school counselors, occupational therapists, and school psychologists, because they're not eligible to pursue the national board or master educator certification. So it's actually, it's bringing those folks in line with what's available for other, other classroom teachers. And the certification would be, would be a fifteen hundred dollar stipend to be in line with what it has been in the past for other groups. Questions from board members?
So explain this to me. This is, so current staff that have this certification would then receive this fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes, they receive it each year that they're employed, that they have that certification. And all of those certifications need to be renewed after a certain number of years. So a staff member, once they get it, would be eligible to receive that stipend while that certification is in place, and if they renew it, that would continue.
So what, I'm sorry, what's driving this? Has it been asked for? Is it that other districts are providing this and now we need to build, we need to edit it to pay this?
Other staff members have asked about this, and that one's that jumping listed, right? And this is also coming from the student services department as an entity looking to standardize this. Other school districts, and also to your question, too, have been doing this, and within the last two years, this has been a trend amongst school districts to add in some sort of compensation for this certification.
So what is the financial impact right now as of today of adding this?
Right, there's three individuals that would qualify for this, so it would be four thousand five hundred dollars going into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now, that's with our existing staff that are employed as of today. How many more staff members do qualify or would qualify at some point today? We don't, I think I said it in committee. So how many don't qualify today but could potentially, let's see, if you're ready to nation?
Julia, do you know the answer to that?
Does the district cover the cost of the certification and/or the additional hours to the bar for training?
Julie? Do you want to cover these hours, Julie?
No. Oh, that's not, that's their company. It's additional licensure beyond what D P I requires. So any of that, that certification comes out of their company for, for D P I again.
But what about the certification itself? Does the district reimburse for that?
Probably through this certification.
Because I know this is hard to fill tier one, but with the risk of something obvious, should we have to fill all those positions with and not hire someone who is nationally certified school counselor? credentials? I'm assuming, I'm hard to fill that position. I mean, it's an obvious question, but...
So let me ask this a different way. Are you saying that these are the groups that we have issues with hiring?
Correct.
Okay, so over the last few years, yes, this, when we do have to post for these individuals or these positions, we have experienced low applications or a low number of applications, and it has been increasingly more difficult to hire staff individuals.
Get that into your question, please. So everybody just along the way there, Chris?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the supplemental teacher contract compensation as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Jennifer's motion is seconded by John to approve our supplemental teacher contract compensation along the lines of the table and shown in the categories identified. Questions from anyone?
Mr. Moore, are we at risk of losing any current staff if we do not have the ones that are listed?
That I cannot answer.
We don't, we don't know for sure. I think it's becoming more and more common in, in other districts. The idea that somebody would leave over fifteen hundred dollars is, is, I guess, up to them.
And maybe I misspoke. Do we, do we require these?
Do not require?
Do not require those.
That's true.
I don't know if this is for Christopher or Julia, but this is kind of a matter of fairness. Is it not? Just to be clear, because these, certain staff numbers are not able to get that master educator or whichever.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, isn't that part of this? What was prescribing this?
Yeah, the S L P should receive this compensation before me, and so it all kind of started with discussions last year where we were hiring another S L P. And it's the same, they have to go through continuing end credits, pay for their additional licensure, and then they were getting compensation. I don't know how many years that was in place, but...
Two thousand sixteen.
Okay. So it was all kind of brought out of the past point as to how that determination was made, if our other student service buckets who could not become a master educator or do the national board certification, if they can also be compensated because they're doing the same thing. Credits above a D P I requirement, all within their national certification, because they just want to stay on top of best practices in that area. So all very good things, but it was because it was already kind of in place for one group and not the others.
And are there any ones that are missing? Let's listen out, we're like, next year, we get another licensing. Because right now, we're just incurring forty-five hundred dollars on the district, and we just had a little conversation about how we're going to be cash traps next year, but this, now this one is, we're not changing anything, but we're, everything is staying the same. So that, I'm trying to piece that together.
This makes no fall for student services staff. That would be half, like, that would make it beautiful.
Fair enough, but if we have somebody coming next year who has a certification in X, Y, and Z, would we want to include that? Is there stuff that's missing?
No, I did a comparable statement for, to, to Rich around what national certifications requirements are and what it takes to obtain and recertify and the costs associated with that. And then I just researched all the other major conference districts to see who does what, how to retain some of those educators, and then that's how we came up with the recommendation. And we use baseline as what's already in place for our S L Ps, so it's the same kind of across the board. But those are all of my buckets, and I don't know of any other areas that would let anybody go to our buckets.
I, I think just to be clear, we should be very thankful and grateful that our staff are willing to invest this time, become better educators, and do the best they can for us in the board, and get into these certifications.
At their own cost. Yes. Yeah, so that's a big piece of the rig there.
Will you benefit from it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and please don't take my questioning as not being appreciative, but I'm trying to connect the last conversations to this conversation on a monetary perspective only. I have an advanced certified degree as well, I think, myself. So I understand the time and energy and effort that goes into having to do one of these advanced certifications. So, believe me, I don't, I don't undertake what that means. I'm trying to connect the dots as to the two conversations. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Motion on the floor is to approve the supplemental teacher contract compensation as presented. Questions? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion clearly passes, thank you.
Next up, discussion and possible action on June twenty twenty-four summer school F T E compensation. Last June, the board approved the twenty, June twenty twenty-four number of employees needed for the first month of summer school. Today, the administration is presenting the spreadsheets showing all the staff members who will receive summer school letters and their rates of pay. The administration is working on identifying the number of staff needed for July twenty-four, August twenty-four, and June twenty-five. That staffing baseline will be brought into the board for June. The start of this year's summer school will be on June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Anything else on that, Chris?
No, other than just a quick plug, and these are ever evolving conversations, and last June, it's hard to say a year later what the number of staff we're, we're going to need this June. Greatly knows we came in like within four of each group. So I put us to Sarah Stuckey and Ursula on heading through the numbers that were approved last July, last June.
I'll make the motion to approve the June twenty twenty-four summer school staff spreadsheet as presented.
Second. Thank you. Jen's motion is seconded by Ed to approve our June twenty twenty-four summer school staff sheet, spreadsheet, as you see it. Questions? I just, it bears repeating for our younger, newer members, it's just, this is always confusing because summer school straddles two fiscal years, right? June is in one piece, July and August are in the other piece, so that's why this, this, it seems unwieldy, but we always do this in chunks, if you will, so just wanted to point that out. All in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you.
Carly, could you please let the record chill that I'm standing for that vote? Thank you. And our final topic is Flex Medical, Flex Dependent H R A, H S A, and Cobra Vendor Update. The H R payroll and business office teams have been facilitating the transition from our current Flex H R, H S A, and Cobra Vendor diversified benefit services to Employee Benefit Corporation. Through discussions with E B C and our insurance broker, U S I, it became apparent that the H R A prescription drug reimbursement process with D B S could not seamlessly transfer to E B C. E B C's automated system lacks the capability to identify the tier classification of drugs and simultaneously reimburse both as a percentage and a flat dollar amount. U S I reported that in the twenty twenty-three calendar year, a total of just about thirty-seven hundred dollars reimbursed for employee prescription drug expenses. The review of the previous two years, two years of prescription drug reimbursement figures show relatively similar amounts, it was twenty-eight hundred in twenty-twenty-two as well, thirty-two hundred in twenty-twenty-one. H R expects the adjustment in H S A prescription drug reimbursement to result in a slight increase in reimbursements, which will likely be balanced out by the cost savings from transitioning to Employee Benefits Corporation. While there will be an increase in H R A prescription drug reimbursements, the shift is necessary due to ongoing issues with customer service from D B S as reported by both the district and its employees. This topic will be brought to the board for further discussion and possible action at our next board meeting. Amen. Any questions on that topic? Point Joel, tell it.
Very good. Thank you, Rick, and thank you, the whole HR committee. As you can tell, that is some of the heavy lifting that the board has to engage in. So thank you very much. Okay, that's it for committee reports. We'll jump up to new business, and as Jeff is making his way up, we have discussion and possible action on a boys' and girls' lacrosse co-op agreement. Mr. Steback?
So a little bit of history here. Over the last about two decades, we've been lacrosse, it's fairly significant, we can say it in Wisconsin. Our own athletes in our high school and in our community have participated in sport in the club, well, but through the Jams of the awesome club. This season marks the inaugural season of lacrosse to the WIAA sports. And we are looking to form a cooperative agreement with the school district of Jamesville, Ford Atkinson, and ourselves to sponsor boys and the girls' lacrosse starting next spring. Just, the rationale, the reason why we want to do this thing, these things are basically provide greater opportunities for our students, that's what I'm arguing with what I was having at the time. Increased new participation. We want to create student support engagement for our students at the high school level. And we want to be responsive to the needs of lots of our students when we are providing program. So in the past decade, our participation in the sport through the Jamesville Lacrosse Club has been very steady, very high. It never flows like everything. And that's kind of the reason why ourselves, Jams, and Fort. Every cooperative agreement has financial terms, okay? And that's a very important part of this. From the Jamesville School District, who will be the lead school, Parker and Greg will be the lead schools in this co-op with Fort and Fort. All member schools will share a proportional financial obligation program. The school district of Jamesville will send an invoice each spring to member schools. Each school district will be financially responsible for funding the program based on the number of participants. So for example, if it costs thirty thousand dollars to run the program, with there's thirty athletes participating, we have eight of those, we will be in boys' eighty thousand dollars, they're facing. The proposal, it is very simple, there's kind of three steps to it. The school district of Jamesville will sponsor lacrosse for both boys and girls as an official WIAA sport, starting in twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The school district of Jamesville leads the co-op with programs for both boys and girls. This program, we can help, the only co-op that we've been, will participate in, which we're not the lead school. Point two, the school district of Milton along with Ford Atkinson would enter this cooperative agreement for a minimum of two school years, beginning that spring. Cooperative agreements through the WIAA operate in two-year cycles, right? So that's the reason for identifying that timeframe. Again, it'll be Jamesville Greg, Jamesville Parker, Ford Atkinson, and us. Here's the caveat, a lot has been mentioned already about the financial situation of the district plans itself. For this first two-year cycle, participating families will be solely responsible for meeting the financial obligations of their athletes participating in the co-op. There will be no money from SDM or activities department budgets allotted for lacrosse. And this will be revisited after the first two-year cycle, based on the financial viability of the program and hours of participation. So that's the caveat. That being said, this is a model that was brought to me by Ford Atkinson in which they engaged in their cooperative agreements after the failure of the previous referendum that um, there were cash traps as well. They currently have this system for our hockey program, where they pass on the costs to the families for participation. That being said, we engage our hockey program and kind of cooperatively with Ford Atkinson in fundraising efforts to help support those families, to help them meet those financial obligations, because we realize that this is kind of an outside situation that other athletes don't face. So I'm going to put that out there as well as the fundraising efforts would be planned and executed to help the burden that this was. So the recommendation that I would actually put out there is to regard a co-op in Jamesville Parker, Greg, and Ford Atkinson as presented to this.
I have a question, Jeff.
Yeah.
The athletes that are interested in this presumably have been doing the club deal in Jamesville. Is their financial contribution going to be somewhat the same as what they've experienced?
Yeah, I think so, like, you know, club sports, it's expensive these days.
This won't be a big shock to them, though.
No, and, you know, I think, you know, we're at the, you know, conversations about, you know, other sports don't require this. But I think what's very important is that we're providing the opportunity for these athletes to know. And we need to share the responsibility of helping meet that opportunity eventually. But as far as club expenses and things, I don't know what it costs to be in Jamesville Lacrosse Club, how it's seeming insignificant like most other schools.
Jeff, I have a quick question, too. It notes that, the memo notes that consideration could be made for additional schools.
Yeah.
Can that happen within the two-year contract?
It cannot. So that is something that no other schools, we kind of reached out to the areas surrounding schools to see who was interested. And since then, it will just be before high school.
And then it would be, it could be just revisited after the two-year contract?
After two years, yes. And like I said, every two, they raise, go ops operate on two-year cycles, maybe that a year.
Jeff, thanks for bringing this forward. I'd love to see more opportunities for our athletes. Do the boys and girls both play in the spring?
Yes, there is spring sports.
The, will the families know the cost at the beginning of the season?
No, so this is one of the reasons why we're going to last, bring the last school board to approve this. But I didn't want to bring this forward without getting financial terms from the district. Every district, from the district of, school district of Jamesville. Every school, every district manages their costs a little differently. We don't operate this way. So we won't know, but those set, that cost will be. However, we can kind of project it. You know, there's projection of what we feel like. We're looking at, you know, itemized costs of running the program. We can get a good feeling of the projection, but it won't be specific. A lot of that will be dependent on the amount of participants we have, right? So the greater participation, the less cost we can be.
I have some questions. Sorry. How many teams will it happen to play against?
So there are thirty-nine boys teams and thirty-six girls teams for this inaugural season. The Big Eight, the Madison, the Big Eight Conference and the Badger Conference, starting next year are combining to create the Badger Lacrosse Conference, which will be a combination of all the schools in the region. So there's fully four conferences. Again, this year will be, since it's sponsored by WIAA, a full tournament, series, state champion, all that stuff.
And that would all be rolled in?
Yep.
So I guess my concern would be, then Jamesville won't tell you till after the season is over?
Correct. So I will say this, we currently have a co-op with school district of Black Ford, the Boy Fury Girls Hockey Team. We receive, and we have to kind of project this in our budgeting, we receive currently a bell again of the year at the end of each season. It's not ideal, but that is how numerous schools operate co-ops because they want to find a way to equally distribute them.
No, and I understand that, but for the fact that this is fully funded by the families. So if we have six kids and you get an invoice for fifteen thousand dollars, there wasn't enough fundraising and the families don't have the money to pay, but the season's already done.
Yeah, we will be able to get, like I said, a good projection, what we feel, it won't be, won't be fifty thousand dollars for these kids. That thousand dollar range is probably where it will be.
And will that be charged to the families ahead of that registration or at the end, similar to how we do now, like against?
They don't have to be at the end, definitely.
They don't have to be at the end of that. Okay, so we're assuming that the families that are playing are signing an agreement that they're going to pay their fee?
And then we put on your fees to establish like any other fee that you have in the picture.
Jeff, will there be any games hosted here?
So we talked about that. So over the last couple of years, we have been a location for the boys' lacrosse high school level team to play. Steve Mahoney, the idiot at Ford and myself, we kind of put that out there, wanting to go take home games, we really enjoy hosting lacrosse here, we'd like to. That's something that we kind of settled down on line. Lacrosse being the home, there could be the primary place to go play. I know there's challenges with minority stadium and stuff, so we could be hosting lacrosse this year.
And then with the, with the operational costs being kind of fixed, who's funding the physical gear that the students are using? Is that part of the operational cost?
That is, that is, that we were after to develop.
Is the co-op paying for certified gears when going forward, not parents going out buying their own?
Correct.
Okay, correct. So there's a?
There's initial startup costs that are going to be associated with starting.
Or putting kids out there with the right equipment?
Absolutely.
And then, what are we going to, do we have a plan for an equity piece if somebody really, really loves lacrosse, but I'm a dad and just can't afford it?
All I can say is, you know, we deal with those scenarios all the time, and we've always found them. So like I said, if we need to fundraise, if we need to, we'll find a way to make sure any kid that wants to play lacrosse, we have to. That could look very differently, that's our situation, right? We've never, at least since I've been here for four years, done a beatdown because of my head.
Who's going to name it?
I don't know. So that's always a big one. Unfortunately, because Jamesville's the lead school, they will have to. If we all get out, just make everybody, that helps. But anyway, I don't know. All those, all those kind of avenues will be hammered out.
Fair enough.
Let them, just don't let them pick their colors, don't cry.
Jeff, I'd like to see this come to fruition here, because I know last year was a big push.
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, the Jamesville Lacrosse Club said that they would fund the entire first season or two, is that not?
I don't know if that's true, but I do know we're in a very fortunate situation with the Jamesville Lacrosse Club. We have a really great relationship with their, their board and their coaches, and they're going to donate a lot, right? So they have a lot of gear, all this stuff that we need to help start up that they are going to donate, help with that, if they'll see any costs and issues and stuff, you know? So I don't know if they're going to pay for the whole season or anything, but, but there's definitely a very good partnership there.
Jeff, is there, is this just a varsity sport? Is there a JV component?
That'll be numbers driven, right? So we will, it will hopefully host a full varsity JV team. I do know, you know, one of the big points is that as a larger co-op, we'll be open policy, right, for specific activity. Again, we want, we want to see participation rise, we want to see numbers up. Hopefully we can start next year with a varsity team.
I'll make a motion that the school district will be able to enter into a cooperative agreement for boys and girls lacrosse with Jamesville, correct? High school, Jamesville, program, makes school and Ford Atkinson high school starting in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, as described in.
Second. Thank you. Tracy's motion, seconded by John to enter us into a cooperative agreement for the opportunities for boys and girls lacrosse. Questions? All in favor of that motion, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. On the go. And I will invite Mr. Gosdick to the podium as a transition subject matter here. I think he's going to start off with twenty-three, twenty-four nutrition team highlights. Welcome, Mike.
Jeff, thank you. So yeah, just wanted to, we're just going to use highlights of the past school year. Our goal every year is to always go in our program and see what we can do and improve it. So this year we've been doing a lot more fresh fruits and vegetables. Our members have saw that in the fall menus and the winter months, we might have stepped back a little bit, a bit more some steamed vegetables versus whole ones. And then now this break, we're back to doing more some of the fresh fruits and veggies. At the Northside, it was due to high school, we had fresh salad bars for students to take advantage of, so we're always looking for different fruits and vegetables to put out into salad bars. DPI received a grant from USDA this basketball, it was called local food source grant. And that grant allowed school districts throughout the state of Wisconsin to work with Midwest farmers to get different types of fresh vegetables into our schools. And it was at low cost to those districts. So we actually took advantage of that. And taking advantage of that, we were able to put on some different veggies on those salad bars, but then we were also able to offer these veggies to our little kids that are in our third graders. And some of those veggies, I think students for the first time, they may even experience them. And some of those veggies that we offered were raw Buddha Bay sticks, raw beet sticks, raw yam sticks, raw turnip sticks, and raw couple, raw beef sticks. So I guess it's helped a couple of times, you're certain, almost, yeah. For a lot of students, they've never had beef or little raw beef. So everybody has different palate, so for some, I'm going to file for some others. K three principals probably protested that, obviously, but I can do some of those experiences as well. So quality improvements, sitting before you on that plate that we asked you not to eat because some of our chicken products. So we have before you two tenders. One tender is kind of flat, it's kind of a ground up chicken product. The other tender is a whole breasted chicken tender. So this current year, we switched over from the, we switched over to the whole breasted chicken tender. Very positive outcomes, very positive experience. Students bring feedback. We also switched over with our chicken breasts, chicken patties to the whole breasted meat as well, and it's been very good, positive responses from the students. So other than that, we have been working on upgrading some of our equipment through our schools. Probably the biggest purchase of equipment or upgrade was at our Northside kitchen. We took out the dishwasher from nineteen ninety-three and upgraded to twenty-one. So that was a very positive thing. My staff are very happy with this. That is all I have for nutrition team updates. I must have had questions.
I got a quick question. You mentioned grants. How many grants do we apply for? How many do we get? And how many are, how many more are there that we don't apply for?
Well, the grant I talked about tonight was a grant that DPI applied for through the USDA. We have then essentially, instead of that grant to us, we're able to utilize it. As grants come through the emails and stuff, we look at them and see if it's a grant that's viable for us to do in this district or not. Sometimes there's practice grants, sometimes there's a fresh fruit vegetable grant. So we do look at that, we see, we have developed a grant to see what's on going. So they come periodically, they're only here like one or two years.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for these.
Yeah, Mike, I just want to echo what Jen just said. Please convey to your entire staff, at least my appreciation would work to you and show us more, because without proper nutrition, nutrition, our kids don't have a great day. You know, a lot of times it's hard, hard work, and really appreciate all the work you guys do, so thank you for that.
So the grant that you talked about, we able to offset costs? Or was that more of like just an opportunity to try new things?
It was an opportunity to try new things, it didn't cost us anything. Actually, it's delivered with other veggies that from a vendor that we were direct to sell. There, there's no cost involved in the district, which is why we took the advantage of it.
But it wasn't like you reduced ordering something else to offset that? It was just something more that came in?
Well, for some of it, we reduced costs. Instead of ordering carrots, they said, I was able to get carrots, they assist this program. So there was some reduced costs, but not a lot. It was more the experience of trying different things that we normally probably wouldn't try. Beet sticks in the whole district, you mentioned that. They were both were very popular, but at least we gave the experience of trying different things, so.
Absolutely, I think it's very.
So, and I just like to throw up into if anybody from the Northside wants to sit down and come and tour up the kitchens or kind of roll around, it's weird, it's not bad.
We have to eat a beet stick?
Love that.
When it comes to you, do we have to eat a beet stick? They're small, and if you try them, okay, try one, just one.
All right, Mike, if anyone else doesn't have anything, we'll move on. I just want to stay at the podium, because we have one piece of business relative to Mike here, and we're going to discuss and possibly act on the twenty-four, twenty-five Wisconsin school nutrition purchasing co-op resolution and agreement. Give us a quick background there, Mike?
Yeah, so this is a co-op we've been with for ten plus years now. And how a lot's changed over the course of the past year. If we're open setting, it'd be I district, so it's a lot over last year. The price to begin the co-op costs us three hundred dollars a year. Some of the benefits we get out of the co-op the benefits we get out of the co-op is that purchasing power, it's time to purchase different food products. So I'll be consulting, works more in the co-op, you know, takes care of a lot of our RMPs, and of course, have to reach out to those food vendors and manufacturers to help try and secure a better price point on different food products. So last year, from food products rebates and credits, we received six thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents from the co-op, so. Now that, Melley Consulting does a lot of work for us to make sure that those RMPs, they go out for like the milk, right, vendor, food, bread vendors and stuff like that, but taking the standard center of like DPI, the USDA, so.
Just a quick question on this, and I remember a lot of this last year, is there a competitor to this organization? Because I noticed some big school districts are actually like, so either they're self-purchasing or there's another one, or I'm just curious, is there another one that competes with, with this one?
So I think a lot of school districts are, probably work through their CISA programs, like I think before we begin with the co-op, we move with CISA, and so otherwise, also the other districts I'm aware are pretty much independent. And it's given their operators, they're just doing their own per se.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Resolution, as presented. Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by John to move us to continue our participation in the nutrition purchasing co-op, as Mike outlined. Questions from anyone? And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Clearly passes. Thank you, Mr. Gosdick. I'll just one, just, next time, bring me something I can eat, I have got something here.
Skeleton is it?
And thank you. Okay, miscellaneous A is a staffing report in Board Docs, which has an updated piece if you did not see that. I'll make a motion to approve the staffing reports as presented.
Second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve your staffing report, including the updated or the revision. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? Motion clearly passes. Gifts and donations, the list of which is in Board Docs.
I'll look through the gifts and donations with friends.
Second. Thank you. Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our gifts and donations with the attitude of the district. Questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? That also clearly passes. Mr. Damon, how about some meeting dates?
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, May thirteenth, and then the second board meeting in May, the second regular board meeting is on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, so make sure you mark that in your calendars, that's a change from the norm, because the fourth, Monday of May is Memorial Day, so May thirteenth and May twenty-eighth for the regular board meeting. We have a school board legal workshop on Monday, May twentieth, at six-thirty here in the PDC. It's the third Monday in May, May twentieth. We have a session scheduled for MEA negotiations on Wednesday, May first, at four fifteen PM, that's here in the PDC for the HR committee, and then we emailed out to the HR committee on a possible HR committee meeting on May first, prior to that negotiation session at three PM. I don't know if, I've heard that folks are not, but it worked for all three.
It worked for everyone. Done. What did you say was May twentieth?
May twentieth is the school board legal workshop with Shana Lewis, School Board Laws and Responsibilities, Monday, May twentieth, six-thirty.
Is that invite sent out?
Don't know, it's been sent out, and we mentioned it at the last.
Okay, it's locked in, though.
But that, but that date, time are locked in, yes.
Did you say six or six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
It is six-thirty, yes.
The HR at three o'clock on the, May first, and then negotiations at four fifteen, May first.
I'll give you a few more details after the first May board meeting, that that legal workshop will be preceded, well, starting at six-thirty, we're going to get a presentation from the high school parliamentary procedure team, which you will really enjoy, because those kids are good, so. All right, any other meeting dates? Otherwise, we have an executive session scheduled, and we are not returning to open after it, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, sub one E, sub one and sub E, and Statute nineteen point eight-two, sub one, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and our topic is review of negotiations with MEA and next steps. Don't move. Second. Thank you. Rick's motion was seconded by John, all in, sorry, we'll call a vote, and that would be Ed?
Yes.
Right, Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes, Joel is, yes, Rick. Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the panel. We are in executive session.
My apologies.
My mind went.